I would like to have rule call, please.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Costellano is absent tonight. Mayor Mes- her, Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Burgel?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo is absent tonight.
Now, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Well, today, the meat of the meeting is pretty much gonna be, uh, front-loaded. So I'm really excited to invite Captain Fuller and the Coast Guard, our Coast Guard partners. We have a proclamation recognizing the United States Coast Guard Month. And we're celebrating Coast Guard Days currently, so I will read this. Whereas the Coast Guard is one of America's five armed forces and traces its founding to August 4th, 1790, when the first Congress authorized construction of ten vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws, prevent smuggling, and protect the collection of federal revenue. And whereas the Coast Guard is a maritime military multi-mission service, unique among the US military branches for having a maritime law enforcement mission with jurisdiction in both domestic and international waters. And whereas the Coast Guard operates under the US Department of Homeland Security during peacetime and can be transferred to the US Department of the Navy by the US President at any time or by the US Congress during times of war. And whereas twenty-six cities have taken strides to acknowledge the contributions and services provided by Coast Guard men and women assigned to their cities. The Coast Guard has in turn recognized these cities as official Coast Guard cities as a way to show their appreciation for the city's efforts to extend so many considerations to the Coast Guard family and their dependents. And whereas on June 3rd, 2000, the city of Eureka was designated as the second official Coast Guard city and was re-designated in 2011 and most recently in 2019, and has taken great pride in contributions of the Coast Guard to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 19th as US Coast Guard Month and recognize their many contributions to the welfare of our community. Oh.
I can just talk about-
There you go.
Mayor Seaman, City Council, and the city of Eureka, thank you so much for all the support we've gotten. On behalf of the men and women of all the Coast Guard people assigned here and their families, I just wanna give a huge thanks for all the support we've gotten. Through the hard times, the good times, the city is there for our folks and they really, uh, they feel it and they appreciate that, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the open house will be down at the station in Samoa on August 10th. And we will have a helicopter down there and boats. And if the fog cooperates, I think Cal Fire's gonna fly a helicopter in and all of our partners as well. So please come down, it'll be a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, do we have, is Eric here from Open Door? Oh, we have somebody from- Oh. Well, I am incredibly sympathetic to childcare duties, it's one of my big issues. So please, we have a proclamation for you and then we'll look forward to hearing from you.
So this is a proclamation from the city of Eureka in recognition of National Health Center Week. Whereas for over fifty years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. And whereas, as the country's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home for twenty-eight million Americans in over eleven thousand communities across the nation. One in every twelve people in the United States get their care in a community health center. And whereas, health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. And whereas, every day, health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. And whereas, in our local region along the north coast, Open Door Community Health Centers has since 1971 provided our underserved population with access to healthcare. And whereas, Open Door Community Health Centers continues to expand its efforts and cared for over sixty thousand patients across Humboldt and Del Norte counties in 2018, a year in which the federal government recognized it as one of the highest-quality community health centers in the country. Now therefore, I, Austin Allison, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 4th through the 10th, 2019, as National Healthcare Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve.
Oh, yes, please come and say-
Aye. I really just wanna say thank you for the recognition. And Health Center Week is really important to us in the health center movement because it's a chance to invite our leaders and representatives to see what we do. And so, if you ever wanna come and get a tour of the clinics or have questions, then we invite you to come and we do thank you for the recognition.
And tomorrow is your employee appreciation, is that on Wednesday? I'm trying to remember your schedule.
I'm not sure, Eric was in charge of the schedule. I know we had bagels yesterday, so.
So I went today to the Well Child Visit-
Oh, nice.
Program, which is a new program you guys are doing, and it was really cool. So when my kids were little, which was a long time ago, you would take your kids for the Well Doctor Visit into a private room. You'd have a short visit, and you would leave, it was very clinical. But here, you get to go and the kids are all together in a room, and they were talking about nutrition, and the kids were interacting with each other, talking about what vegetables they like to eat and how they exercise. And it was just adorable. I had somebody there talking about dental care. I've been doing a lot of interviews with people who care for children in all different ways, and dental care comes up over and over and over again as being important. So it was a really, it was a great morning.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's our big push. So there still aren't enough primary care providers in the country to take care of everybody. And so we're, you know, putting our thinking caps on and trying to figure out how to take care of more people with fewer resources. And that's one of the big initiatives right now is group Well Child Visits, and they love it.
Yeah, it seems not only like maybe it's more efficient, but it also seemed like a time everybody was having a good time and learning a little, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we have a surprise presentation I'm very excited about. I'd like to invite Chief Watson up for a new program that they are gonna be introducing to the community soon.
Good evening, Mayor Seaman, members of council. Mayor, now that you've pumped this up so much, I hope we don't disappoint here. Basically, I just wanted to introduce it here first. Our department will be putting out a press release in the coming days that talked us a little bit about the program. Basically, we're filming a series of short videos of profile members of our department, not just officers, but dispatchers, professional staff, maybe volunteers, really with the goal in mind to, um, kind of humanize the badge a little bit more, to, um, give the perspective of policing that members of our department have as well as kind of their own perspectives. We call it EPD in the community, which kind of says it all. And I think that one of the important takeaways is, yes, we are law enforcement officers, but we're also so much more. We're members of the community, we're fellow human beings. And so it's just an opportunity for the community to get to know the amazing people at the Eureka Police Department, both, again, officers and professional staff and dispatchers a little bit better, gain some insight through some short ride-alongs and sit-alongs. So I think the first video will kind of speak for itself. It features Ranger Gagnon, who's a member of our Community Safety Enhancement Team. And without further ado, I will play the video. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Gagnon, I'm the, one of the Eureka City Park Rangers. I'm part of the Community Safety Enhancement Team that deals primarily with folks that are caught in the cycles of addiction, mental health, and homelessness. Part of the mission of CSAT is kind of summed up in three words. It's accountability, it's engagement, and it's ownership. What makes my job so unique and probably one of the most diverse within the department is that we're really looking for creative ways to face old problems. Rather than simply taking people to jail on every contact, sometimes we're just talking with folks. We're more in many ways like the old-school beat officer than more traditional law enforcement. The idea is not just to build trust, it's to build relationships. Getting to know people on a first-name basis, getting out of the vehicle or being on foot and shaking hands, letting people tell you stories, trying to understand where they've come from. Because once we can do that, once we can build those relationships and understand where this person is coming from and how they got there, we can help them find their way back, whether that's back to family, back to sobriety, back to mental health, or back to housing.
Thank you, and I think we had a brief glimpse of Benny, who is Officer Gagnon's former canine partner with the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. When he was there, I believe he was a drug-detection dog. Now he's retired fully from that line of work, and we're actually bringing him back to the department as a kind of therapy and comfort dog. So he'll be available for engagement with the community, kind of as a form of employee wellness around the department, as well as there may be instances where we have children and other crime victims that are traumatized. And as we all know, you know, a pet can be very comforting in those situations. So I think you got a glimpse of Benny there, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
And how many of these videos do you think you're gonna make?
We have, I think, around four filmed already. There'll be probably around a dozen. And then depending on how that goes, we may continue over time. We're gonna release them, not all at once, we'll just kind of trickle them out as we go. But there'll definitely be more released shortly.
Nice. It's nice for people to get to know you guys on a, you know, kind of a more personal level and understand what you're doing, and so, thank you.
And that's certainly a two-way street and something that we're really trying to communicate, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have a-
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate how you've been sending out some of the stories about transitioning people and the movement from where they've been to where they are. And the appreciation, I think, that the community is recognizing in your officers and what you guys have been doing. You've been doing a great job and really appreciate all that you guys do. And so, I would like, I think, all of us on the council really appreciate our police force and are very grateful for you. And I love that those stories are coming out because then it helps the community see the things that we see and recognize, so, thank you.
All right, now this is the time for members, this is public comment period. It's the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Our policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Members of the public wishing to address the council may submit a speaker card to the city clerk. There you go, and we'll be called up in order.
All right, we have Kathy Powers.
Good evening, everybody. It's the first time I've spoken to you. Hopefully it won't be my last. I just really want to express my feelings about my-
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to express my discomfort for my neighborhood. I live at Third and Q. The bus that I used to take children to get, go to school, no longer stops there. The reason it doesn't stop there is because there are too many needles, too much urine and feces, too many bandages that have come off of wounds that we don't know what they were when they were covered. I'm very, very hurt and disturbed about this. When I first came to this town, it was the most beautiful little town I have ever seen. I had to go away because my parents were dying. I went, I took care of them, and I came back. I came back because I wanted to be where I was most happy. Happiness does not live in my neighborhood anymore. The group, and you all knew who they are, that is in my neighborhood to supposedly help people with addiction and/or homelessness. I can understand the background for that and the desire to make things better, but I'm afraid that the approach that was taken to fix this is a wrong approach. It should have been thought out a little bit better, in my estimation. I'm not alone in that thought. I paid thirteen hundred dollars a month for my small, little apartment, and that thirteen hundred dollars a month feels like pain now where it didn't before. There's just too much. We have had overdoses, we have had death. I've lost many of my friends' children because of the dope problem in our community. And it really, God, it's so hard. It is so hard. I would love to be able to do the right thing all the time, but I'm just one human being. I would love it if everybody here would really just sit down and honestly think about what's happening to the people in this community, especially in the areas where we have most of the people who are walking with nowhere to go, no real help. And I, I'm really upset about the fact that-
Thank you. I don't know why it didn't beep, but the thing is-
Oh, so my time's up?
Yeah. Thank you, though.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Cornelius Lowenstein, and on deck will be Terry Roman-Little.
Take a little. So today, I'm standing here actually to read to you the, um, the, uh, response of the police chief of Chico in response to a needle program that is really, really similar to Hatcher. And his opinion is a very clear one, it's not in his neighborhood, not in his town. And he argues with all the common, uh, common sense arguments of endangering the public as a whole, especially the most vulnerable, those are our children, and as well as eight of his police officers that got pricked by needles in the last year. So, um, let me read that quickly to you guys. I know you can't wait to hear that from Police Chief O'Brien of Chico, California. The Chico Police Department was asked to respond to a proposal submitted to the Harm Reduction Coalition to allow syringe distribution in the vicinity of the Chapman Elementary and Community Park, as well as at the Blackbird Cafe. I appreciate the opportunity to respond to this proposal. I want to first say that I appreciate the motives of HRC and their attempts to address one of the impacts of IV drug use. I believe they want to help reduce the spread of infectious diseases within the addicted community. I see that as an honorable objective. However, as the chief of police, I must concern myself with the well-being of all within the community, especially the most vulnerable, our children. I also believe the Model Four and the location of the distribution is lacking. In addition, I'm concerned for my own staff as they have suffered eight separate needle-stick exposures since 2015. My first concern with the proposal involves location. The current proposal would allow syringe distribution adjacent to Chapman Elementary School and Community Park. Sounds like our library. Two locations where children attend school and recreate outside. Chapman Elementary School is situated adjacent to where syringes distribution is proposed to occur. Children should not be exposed either to the distribution of syringes nor the eventual outcome of that distribution. The city of Chico and the Chico Area Recreation District have worked hard to remove the dangerous activities associated with IV drug use, including the discarding of syringes. Children use this park regularly. I heard very concerning reports from parents and other citizens about children being exposed to drug use and discarded needles. After much effort, Community Park is now much safer with the numbers of discarded needles found in the park greatly reduced. That is a positive for all, but especially for our children. Unfettered syringe distribution will undo that hard work and make public spaces designed for children unsafe, and so on and so on. I can only encourage people to read this email of the police chief of Chico in regards to a needle exchange program similar to Hatcher, and I hope they will not allow it.
Okay. Hello, so we don't clap generally during, actually during most things unless it's a presentation. So, because we want people to feel free to speak on whatever issue they're talking about. Bring it down. That's where I live.
Hi, I'm Terry Roman-Little, and I'm the Assistant Director of Humboldt Bay Marathon. And I'm thrilled to be here for the fifth time in a row during Coast Guard Month to talk about this amazing Humboldt Bay Marathon. And I think it's a nice connection that the full marathon, twenty-six point two miles, goes around a large body of water through which the Coast Guard helps keep people safe. It's a really unusual opportunity for marathon runners to actually get to circumnavigate water. It's often an out-and-back or nearby, you get a glance, but getting to go around the bay is pretty fabulous. Having the cool coastal weather that we have right now, when you've heard the temperatures across the country, amazing. So, a couple things about our race. We are, again, a Boston qualifying race, so anybody who meets their gender and time qualifications could make it to Boston. Last year, we were a little over nineteen percent of our runners who finished qualified for Boston. That's pretty significant. This year, we also got another level of qualifications. We have a woman coming from Utah who's trying to get into the Olympic trials. So we went through another level with the US ATF to get her certified so that if she makes her time, which is pretty ambitious, if she does it, she'll be off to the Olympic trials. That's amazing. We couldn't do this without all the support from city officials, county officials, volunteers, family members, businesses. This year, for the second year in a row, HPRC, The Connection, which is a nonprofit generous part of their cannabis distribution, um, business, is our title sponsor for the full and the half marathon. Papa and Barclay hopped in, and now they're our 5K sponsors. If you run the 5K, you could get this shirt. Even if you walk it, you could get the shirt. We have amazing artists in our community. We're celebrating all the art that's going up in Eureka. I have for you our fifth annual shirt. This is the women's. Men don't get the little cute sleeveless. Sarah Starr is once again our artist. She's got the pelican, which is pretty prominent in the bay. Whoops, sorry. I'm excited, okay. Matickets on there for the first time ever, and then the sponsors on the back. Woo, better hurry up. And we won't let Kim Burgel touch this till she earns it. She's been helping us every year and we really appreciate that too. But this is a medal you could get by finishing the half marathon. Full marathon, twenty-six point two. We offer a one-mile fun run called the Marina Mile. Anyone is welcome to do that, and if you do, you're gonna get bib number one because that's the only order we number, or the only number we order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you wanna say something? Oh, wait.
Can you tell us, can you give us the dates and all that information?
Oh.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, it's Sunday, August 11th.
I just wanted to make sure it was publicly stated when it is and all of that.
And Mr. Rich Baker is next.
Hello, my name's Rich Baker. I am the Director of Humboldt Bay Marathon. I thank Terry, my co-director, my assistant director, for coming up and introducing things. And yes, for the record, the Humboldt, the fifth annual Humboldt Bay Marathon, half marathon, 5K, and Marina Mile races will be this Sunday, August 11th. The marathon starts at 7:00 AM near Second and G Street in Eureka. And as Terry said, it goes all the way around Humboldt Bay. It goes up the trail behind Target, and then it goes up the shoulder of 101, goes through the Arcata bottoms on the trail through the Arcata Marsh, loops up towards Mad River Hospital, comes all the way back down the peninsula, loops under the bridge, across the bridges, through Old Town, and back to the Matickett Plaza. And the Matickett Plaza is going to be the finish line for all the races. It's gonna be the start line for the 5K and the Marina Mile. So if you're interested in coming out for any of the races, we are taking sign-ups. We have a packet pickup at the Manila Community Center on Saturday from 4:30 to 7:30. And we're taking entries up to a few minutes before the race starts, each race. The 5K starts at 8:30 on Sunday morning. The Marina Mile starts at nine o'clock, and those are both at the Matickett Plaza. As I already said, the marathon starts near Second and G Streets in Eureka. And the half marathon starts on the south edge of Clop Lake in the Arcata Marsh. And that's at 9:00 AM on Sunday morning. We really couldn't do this without the participation of the entire community. All of the local government entities have issued permits. So I wanna give a special thanks to Christine Tyson in the city manager's office. She works with us on the permits every year. She is fantastic. Don't ever get rid of that woman, she's amazing. Do everything you can to keep that woman around. But also, I mean, that's true for all the government agencies we've worked with. We've had incredible support. We love all of the volunteers who come out. We have a lot of great local volunteers. We can always use more. It's a very big course. It's twenty-six point two miles. There's a lot of different turns and twists in the course. We'd love to put somebody at every single intersection. We need more bodies to do that, but we can always, always, always use more volunteers. So they can go to humboldtbaymarathon.com and get information about volunteering. Always, always looking for more volunteers. But thanks to all of the volunteers who have come out. Everybody should come out and cheer for everybody who is running. And as Terry already alluded, Councilmember Burgel will be running the half marathon this year, is that right? Running, yes, yes. And gonna set a new personal record for that half marathon. Running from one aid station to the next aid station, yes. And that's another place where we have great volunteers. We've got volunteers staffing all the aid stations around the course. This is just a great community to do an event in, and we love Humboldt County, we love Eureka, and we're looking forward to a great event on Sunday. Come out and cheer for everybody at the Matickett Plaza.
Thank you very much. Yeah, not that it is not, I know. Do we have any other, do we have any other cards? Okay, does anybody else wish to speak at this time?
Hello. My name is Kelly Pifferini, and I've been selected to represent the DP voice in the Eureka street community. I bring a message from the Eureka's most chronically homeless citizens. The changes we have seen in- The changes we have seen in, um, the changes we have seen in services, in homeless services in Eureka is a step in the right direction. It shows us that our leaders have their minds on course. But services and opportunities are only the tools we need to recover from homelessness. This, it's, it's finding the courage to take that first step back into society. But it's one of the hardest decisions homeless people face, to leave the comfort, our comfort zone and all this social and moral support that we have behind us, and step back into the world that hasn't seen us in a long time. So, you tell yourself, it's gonna get better. It's gonna, with time, I'll feel more comfortable, that people will stop, people will start trusting me as they see that I'm making it. Sadly, society here in Eureka is not going to give us a big bear hug. Let's, or let us know that everything's gonna be okay. And don't worry now that you're on the right side of society. We're not gonna let you fail, brother. That we're gonna throw every opportunity at you, every, every opportunity possible, and welcome you back like a lost relative. And we, um, I can't even read on writing. Can you do that? And we won't treat you like a parolee that has committed a crime. This is not Eureka's way. Instead, parolees are the ones treated with this kind of treatment, letting them ease their way back into society as if they never committed a crime at all. Eureka's need to let go of the grudge they have against, or they have developed against homeless people the second, the second they muster up enough courage to take that step. Eureka's need to run over to the ex-panhandler, and his new job is sitting there and being the first one to give him that $20 tip and say, "Hey, you made it." But that's just not the way it is. I say to Eureka's, you need to be this way, or we're not gonna ever make it. Thank you.
I know. Oh, here, I can raise that up for you a little bit.
Hello, Council. My name is James Graham, volunteer for Riverlife Foundation. I live in Fortuna. I didn't really have anything prepared to say other than what Cornelia said. I was gonna kinda say the same thing. I will say that there's a big problem with homeless going on in Eureka. Some of them want help, some of them don't. Too many of them, I would say, don't want any help, like the people behind Taco Bell. You can't even go there and eat anymore without getting attacked by homeless people. And I'd like to dare any one of you to take a walk over there, take that little trail behind there, and take a look and see what's going on over there. And you can't even drive through Eureka without seeing weirdos doing the tweak dance, whatever you wanna call it. I mean, yeah, people need help, but there's a lot of people on drugs that don't want help, that are walking up and down the road. I've seen a guy shooting up in broad daylight right in Eureka, right on Broadway, and, I mean, I know you're not miracle workers, but there's gotta be something you can do about it. And as far as the needle litter goes, that's just, seems like a dead end road. You're just gonna keep allowing that, needles piling up all over the place. Last time I went up on a cleanup, the guy was disrespectful enough to drop one right in front of me, full of blood, fresh. And, uh, you can't give a drug that makes people not care about something and expect, expect them to care about something, like picking up their own needle. And to all the heroin addicts out there, pick up your own needles. They belong to you and you only, and so do the diseases that are in them waiting to hurt our children and other people. Enough's enough. Something's gotta be done about it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Linda Schultz, and I was born and raised here in Eureka. And my husband and I moved away back in 1965 and moved to, after we got married, and moved to Hawaii and, um, left my family and everybody here. It was really hard to do, but moved to Hawaii and then moved to Sonoma, raised our family, and we decided we wanted to come back to Eureka, our home, because I love it here. But since I, we bought a house on I Street, old Victorian, very nice. But I didn't realize at the time when I moved back that there were drug addicts everywhere on, around where I live. And in the meantime, my husband's passed away, and I'm there by myself. And the other day, I was out on the side of my house, and there were just like 12 or 13 needles outside my gate in my, um, yard, and outside my gate, but it's still in my yard. And some were used, some were not, and I regularly find broken glass bottles with, that had been burnt underneath, and lighters, and feces, and garbage. They just, it's just terrible. There's a drug house across the street from me, but I, I just see people coming and going all the time. It's really frustrating because I love it here, and it's hard to see this kind of thing happening in our beautiful community. I really don't know what to say about it. I don't understand. I appreciate people that have had a hard time, that are on drugs, that have addictions, that try to help themselves. I love it. But if they're out there trying to cause harm to everybody and destroying property, and I have no respect for that at all, and I, I just think that they need to try to help themselves and not be given a free things to help them with their addiction. So, I haven't been stuck by a needle yet, so that's good, but I know other people that have, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Do we have any others? All right. Oh. In response to that, you're supposed to.
So, I appreciate everyone making these comments about how frustrated they are, but I'd also ask you to relay your concerns to the county, the state, the federal government. You know, the city of Eureka, our funding primarily comes from 1.5% of sales tax, so we don't have public health or mental health services. We rely on these services from the county and from the state and from the federal government. You know, I send over like 35% of my income to the federal government. That's where all the resources is, and I think our lawmakers at the federal level really need to understand what's happening in every community and not just Eureka, because we are going through a national, you know, drug crisis essentially, and our country is starting to crumble in those areas. And so, my, my request is that you just relay that to other people as well.
Okay. That will close public comment. And we will move on to public hearings, in which there are none, and move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Thank you, thank you. Everybody votes.
Three yes votes. Councilmembers Costellano and Arroyo absent. Motion carries.
Um, now we're gonna move on to ordinances and resolutions. C1 is Eureka Municipal Code, New Streets Chapter. I think you got the sexiest thing on the, on the actual agenda today. We're also gonna destroy some stuff, so.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. At your last meeting on July 16th, the Council introduced Bill Number 897-CS, an ordinance creating new streets chapter within the municipal code. And taking Council feedback on that initial version of the ordinance, staff did make a few changes that are included in the final version tonight. That includes new language pertaining to the coordination of planned excavations, encouraging utilities to communicate with one another and with the city before they plan projects, new language codifying requirements that were previously shown only in that T-cut detail, and then new and revised language about the calculation of significant pavement disturbing activities, that 15% thing we were talking about last time, and then finally revised language moving certain requirements for the restoration of prohibition streets. So, those are the changes. Everything else is the same, and with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the ordinance.
Do I have a motion, or does anybody have question, that's questions and then, yeah, and then comment, sorry. Does anybody have questions? All right, we'll open it up for a public comment. Anybody here wanna say something about this? All right, bringing it back. Do we have a comment?
We have a motion.
A motion, nice.
This is a long time coming. So, I would like to waive reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 897-CS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending the Eureka Municipal Code Title V, Public Works, and adding a new Chapter 56 Streets.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Three yes votes. Councilmembers Costellano and Arroyo absent. Motion carries.
Right on. Congratulations. Let's go make our streets look better. And now we are moving on to Item D, Report and Action Items. D1, League of California Cities Voting Delegate.
That will be me. So, Mayor and Council, as you know, the League of California Cities Annual Conference will be in October, the 15th through the 17th, and several of you are attending, some are still considering. And at that meeting, there's a, at the conference, a business meeting is held on Friday where the League proposes several resolutions, and each of the cities needs to delegate one of their councilmembers or mayor to be a voting delegate to that business meeting, and that's what I'm looking for tonight.
Councilmember Burgele?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Mezner.
Okay. I will accept that. I'm also on the general, our, the General Resolution Committee. Is that a conflict at all, or is that fine?
No, that wouldn't be.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to nominate Kim Burgele as alternate.
As an alternate? All right. So, do we have then a motion to?
We can do it by consensus if everyone's in agreement.
Is everybody good with that? Right on.
Very good.
And then we will move on to City Manager Reports.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Do you at least want to talk about how awesome the mural festival was? You were there a lot.
I was, and it was an awesome, uh, street art festival this year, our second annual. And I think it's, no, Sixth Street was closed from C to H, and everyone just seemed to have a great time, added 20 new murals. I think it was initially 19, and then all the artists did the, came together to do the, the 20th one, and I think, looking forward to next year, which will be in, I think, the plan is in Henderson Center. So, Old Town the first year, Downtown second, Henderson Center. I think we, a lot of good comments from the artists too, and, and the mayor had two artists staying with her from, I think, both from Toronto. And I, I think it just created a very positive vibe, and then, and it carried right into Arts Alive Saturday night as well, so.
That was exciting. I just, you went to several of the tours, so it wasn't just the day for you. You, you were invested. I like to see you out there a lot. And also, it's nice to hear your voice occasionally. We had time tonight. Okay. The City Managers' report is over. Now we get to do Council Reports, and let's start with Councilman Mezner.
All right. Okay, well, the Arts Festival was great. I'm sure everyone would like to say something about that, so, but the things I would like to just mention is a really appreciation for all the people who were involved. There was a lot of, a lot of great volunteers as well, and unfortunately, they're not here tonight, but they were here at the last meeting, and really appreciate all the time and effort they've been putting in, as well as all of the artists. They were pretty, it's pretty amazing, and if you haven't gone, come out and looked at it, come out, there's still actually some pieces being finished and completed, and it's an exciting thing to do as a city, being able to see our art, our strategic art plan going forward these last two years has been, well, really only a year, but putting that in, putting that into place and then seeing it move forward has been really fun, and the added art, which is great. So, not only was, do we have the art tours every night, which was fun to go to and experience, but also the artist reception was great. Thank you for doing that. Mayor Seaman for the artist reception. And then also, there was a ribbon cutting for the Chamber, which was great, a good brand-new building, and they have art in it, so please go check that out as well. And the Chamber building has a lot of, they have an incubator for, just so the public knows, and for new businesses, and it's very inexpensive, so it's a cheap way to get started, inexpensive way. And then also, we've been, I just want to announce a couple things. Zootinis this Saturday, so Saturday night for the zoo. Get your tickets if you haven't got them. Coast Guard Days, don't forget that on Saturday. And then also, we have a Redwood Empire Division meeting for the League of California Cities this Friday in Point Arena, and so a few of us will be at that, and we'll bring back reports about that as well, but just letting people know that's happening as well.
Excellent. Councilmember, uh, Allison? Allison?
Councilmember Mezner covered a lot of ground with the report, but I volunteered at the, at the Street Art Festival. It was very amazing seeing so many people out having a great time, and really gave me a lot of pride for being a citizen of Eureka. I really think this is a special place to live, and it's because of the people who inhabit this place. We really put a lot of love into our community, and it really does show. Also, I'll be going to Point Arena as well and maybe see some of y'all at Zootini.
Very nice. Councilmember Burgele?
Well, you've covered pretty much everything, but I, I did want to talk about something. You know, I just, I really, I wish he was still here. But I, I just really want to talk about and honor Kelly Pifferini for speaking during public comment. This is a person who has come miles and miles and miles forward in his life and is a great example, which, you know, two years ago, I wouldn't have said that. He and I have had a love-hate relationship, but to watch his, him grow and to become a citizen and to become a part of our community is such a beautiful thing, and I just, I, I would love the community to know that this happens all the time. I mean, I hear in, in public comment, it's really, it's so disheartening to hear the negativity and the dehumanizing of human beings during public comment. And what I'd like to say to that is that there's a whole group of people that are consistently working to support people into a different way to live, and our CSAT team is one of those. I mean, they got 49 people into recovery this year. I mean, that's an amazing accomplishment, Officer Gagnon and LaFrance, and I just, I really appreciate how our city thinks outside the box, and they, we don't just go with the state program or the federal program. We say, let's look at what we can do as a city and as a community to work together to remedy situations where people are having these hard times. And so, I just want to reiterate that, you know, it takes a lot of courage to, uh, to change your lifestyle, and I'm sure that if you were housed and you were plucked from your home and put into that same situation that these folks are in, it would be just as terrifying. And when you're, when you're living out on the streets, it's not the best thing necessarily, but it's familiar, and it's very scary to step outside of that. And so, I think it's really important that we honor people who have been willing to take those steps. It's a huge step, and so I just was feeling really disheartened, and I just really wanted to share that because it's super important. And then on a happy note, today I spent all day looking for the seven doors for the art festival. I found five, so anybody that wants to contact me with the other two, I'd be happy to know that. And the Humboldt Bay Marathon, actually, Rich had mentioned it, but they're also, they're looking for traffic volunteers, so if you're interested in that, you can contact me on my Council page, and I can get you connected, or you can contact Rich at the Humboldt Bay Marathon, um, page. It's gonna be a great event, and I hope that a lot of people show up and turn up. I mean, if this woman shows up for the Olympic Trials, that's pretty cool, pretty cool, and she's gonna need a lot of support from our city, so, anyway. I love living here. I went to the art festival. It was amazing. And, you know, some of those events, the gift for me in those events is just seeing how our community really is so cohesive and so willing to work together to make things happen. And I hope that if you're not willing to work together, that you'd be willing to put that aside. that aside and join us, because we love you too. Thank you.
And I'll just say one thing about the mural festival too, or the, the Eureka Street Art Festival. Because I did have two, two of the artists staying with me, I really got to hear from their perspective what it was like. Talked to a lot of artists who travel a lot and do festivals, and they were very impressed with the festival that we had here. They don't often get a chance to interact with each other. They're not usually so close, so close together, so they got to help and work with each other. One of my favorite stories, I was working with, I had the two guys at my house who knew of each other but didn't know each other yet. And one of them was such a fan of the other one, and absolutely looked up to him, was giddy that he got to stay in the same house and learn from him, and he did. He was like a sponge. And then the one that he looked up to met Dwayne Flatmo and went, oh my gosh, if I can just get a quarter, do a quarter of what he has done in his life, I would feel successful. So when you bring people together and you let them learn from each other, I think that's really what they take away from it. And like I said, when they leave, they're not just leaving their murals here, but they're ambassadors for the city. And I feel like every one of them is gonna leave speaking nothing but praises for Eureka. And that's because everybody turned out, and the people who organized it did a great job, and everybody should be very proud. And with that, I will close out the meeting. Meeting's adjourned.